So let's begin the meeting. Welcome to Monday, June 6th, 2022 Beacon City School District School Board meeting. Please rise for the fudge. The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is his, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justice. Was that was you this time? Was that was you this time? I didn't hear you talk to yourself. You didn't say anything. I did. You didn't get it? Oh, I had no service. Yeah.
You can move the mic a little closer to you there.
Yeah, well, I was whispering, so I was. We were having. Sorry. Okay, sorry. Can we also please stand for a moment of silence for Cyrus Stevens Vaughn III? He retired as a music teacher and director of music for Beacon City School District for over 30 years, as well as Joanne McDonald, who was a.
First grade teacher at Sargent.
First grade teacher at Sargent, as well as the 19 children and two teachers killed at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. Roll call, Kelly.
Better fit?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Excuse.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Ms. Heath?
Delayed.
Mr. Sang?
Delayed.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stadler?
Here.
Ms. Yure?
Here.
Thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. We're going to begin with open to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment? Helen?
I'm prepared today, so I'm going to read in the hopes of keeping it to four minutes.
Okay, great.
Hello again. I am Helen Eman. My son is a kindergartner at South Ave Elementary, and my daughter will be in two years. She's three. I'm here to ask us as a community bestowed with the awesome responsibility of crafting our students' learning environments to reconsider the use of iReady in classrooms for our littlest learners, just as a reminder. So knowing I have four minutes tonight, I'm going to be kind of blunt. Please don't take offense. I believe we are all in this together, and that all of us, board members, administrators, teachers, parents, we all want what's best. And there are so many different theories of education, so many somewhat convincing studies, maybe flawed, maybe great. It can be hard to know what's best. In fact, in conversations with Mrs. Ruderson O'Neill, we have discussed how there's no one right way to do education, and it complements complicates our approach. Next time we meet, or maybe via email, I want to share more with this community about what underpins my beliefs, what research I have read, and what I am reading, and how that impacts our path forward. which is its data. And I understand that as a district, we seem somewhat data-starved, and I it makes me a little nervous because starvation can make us desperate. It can make us overlook shortcomings in data, and it can make us kind of contribute to accepting solutions without asking enough questions. You either have already or will see reports from iReady instruct, and I want you to know that what generates those reports is a somewhat flawed system. So over the past six months, I have asked the same question of many people who interact with iReady, which is, can I review the questions my son got right and wrong on his iReady instruct lesson? He's given a score that's color-coded, and I just want to see, what did he do to get that score? And it's not possible. It's not possible because iReady as a platform does not save the questions that a student user answers as they go through iInstruct. I've been told this is because it's adaptive, but it's probably just a tech flaw. It's kind of simple, I think, probably. But that shortcoming, I think, a foundational fault in the program demonstrates three very important points I want to make tonight. One, there is no science or study that suggests young children will learn better from a screen than a human. In fact, the opposite has been proven true over and over again. Most four- to six-year-olds should not be asked to attend to an independent activity for more than 15 minutes. That is also science-proven. Yeah, iReady recommends 45 minutes twice a week on their computer program. It's developmentally inappropriate. Also, teachers work best when they have deep relationships with students and when they learn to trust those relationships. They evaluate best when they're spending time with students, and they can do a better job of evaluating our students than an algorithm written by a developer who may or may not have worked with a teacher can do. And right now, we are trusting our students' evaluation to an algorithm we cannot double-check. And then finally, in a quest to teach our students how to learn, we are kind of tricking them because we are implicitly implying that they can learn from screens the same or better than they can learn from their human teachers. And it's not true. So we aren't teaching them how to learn for themselves in kindergarten. We're instead putting them in front of a screen so we can have a report that I think is just for us, because from what I can tell from the state, and I've called them two different times, they don't require data on assessment for kindergarteners. And I might be wrong, and if I am, I want you to tell me that. But from what I can tell, we're doing this to ourselves, and since this is our community to craft, we could change that, and that's what I'm asking us to explore together. Finally, different buildings are implementing iReady differently. This doesn't have to do with the tech flaw, but some do it in class in kindergarten, and some buildings have it their students take iReady at home. So when you're looking at kindergarten data, you aren't actually looking at the same type of data across the four systems, but you'll feel like you are. So you're also being tricked in a way. But I believe the biggest risk with iReady is that you all of a sudden will have a whole bunch of data, and you'll start to want to draw conclusions because we're humans, and that's what we want to do. And I would ask you to pause before you do that. Think of me, and hopefully, we can find a way to move forward and have more of a back-and-forth. And I don't know what that is, but that's for you guys to help me figure out, I think, together, I hope, and I can email you after the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I did reach out to you because we don't do a back-and-forth here, but I'm happy to talk to you more, and I don't have these answers, so I would leave those.
Well, I mean, just one thing, it's not necessarily answers, but we're planning a data workshop with the board in a future meeting, either the next one or one in July, just depending on timing. I know we have a lot of other things happening at the meetings, too, but for sure, that's going to happen. I've looked at the amount of time students are on. Kindergarten students, if I'm remembering correctly, are on about 30 minutes a week from what I've seen. But I when I say this, like, I hear your concern, any concerns parents have. We always take a look at things, reevaluate, look at how we're using a tool, make sure we're not just relying on one tool. So I think what we were planning on doing is taking some of that to the workshop on data that we were going to do.
Great.
I'll just work with Flor and Meredith about when we'll do it.
Are workshops open to the public?
It's like in a board meeting.
Oh, so it's like when someone's presenting, you call that part the workshop?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So but I can't participate in that, right? I just listen and take notes?
It'd be a board workshop. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, so moving on to our workshop tonight, we are going to hear from Matt with an update on our security.
Come on up. So tonight, I wanted to do just an overview of some of the things that we've been working on with school security over the last few years. I have Mark Thomas with me, our Director of Security, who has been in the role for the last four years and change. And so, you know, obviously, we had our moment of silence at the beginning of today. Every school has been taking stock from the tragedy that happened two weeks ago now. But with that said, we have been doing a number of things really for the last many years with a particular focus the last four years on making sure we're trying to do everything possible in the district to have good security and safety. So we're just going to go through some of kind of the highlights of what we do. Mark and I are going to kind of tag team this presentation, and we kind of saw today as a chance for the board to ask questions if you have them, so you don't have to wait till the end, just ask as we go or wait till the end. It's up to you. So, you know, one of the building blocks of what we do is, and this is a state requirement, but it's district and building emergency planning. So each school has an emergency response team. The district has a team as well. Mark chairs the district team. Each school principal chairs the building team. Mark sits on all of those committees. They meet regularly to revise and refine emergency planning. The district plan is the only public plan. It's on our website. We actually put it up every summer for public. The public can view it for a period of time to potentially give feedback. The building plans are obviously, you know, confidential to each of the schools. And like I said, Mark is very active participant and/or facilitator on each of these teams. We have a really strong relationship with local law enforcement. Both Beacon Police Department and the Town of Fishkill PD partner with us with a number of things, so they attend many of these emergency planning meetings. They take part in most of the lockdown drills we do.
Because of COVID, we weren't allowing people in the building, so now we are just starting to get them back in. Prior to that, they always assisted with all the unlocking of lockdown drills, so they were very active in it. Once COVID hit, of course, they were out of the building, but they're slowly getting back into it, and they're there on every drill that I planned. They're aware of it, and they take part of it if they necessary to be there, so.
One of the one of the really huge things that especially the Beacon Police Department helps us with is working with families. So and this is something that I think has been on a lot of people's minds. What do we do when there's like a concern? And so a concern may be a student making a threat, and we need to investigate the threat, or a student discussing weapons in a way that may indicate like a high-level familiarity, and it causes either, you know, fear or concern amongst their peers or staff. So we, you know, this typically is usually at the middle school and the high school. So they have like a school team that looks into it from the student mental health side, but then the Beacon Police Department or Town of Fishkill, depending on where the student resides, goes out and works with the family and talks with the family about weapons in the house, how they're secured. They do this a number of times every single school year, at any time of day, night, you know, early morning, they work with this kind of around the clock and working with families with this. It's not an overwhelming number, but I did want to highlight that tonight because that's something that we don't talk about a lot, but it's something that they provide for us all the time. And I think with Mark coming on board as the Director of Security, I mentioned in the letter to the community, Mark is retired Beacon Police Department. He's really helped with our relationship with the BPD, and he Mark really facilitates all of that work that we do with families when we have to in this area. And I think it's been really, really helpful. It shows that we're following up on things. It shows that we're just not making a decision about something that we're concerned about, that we have the experts involved, and it's definitely a team approach. Is there anything you would want to add about that?
Just two examples I'll bring up. Town of Fishkill, we had a kindergarten at Glennum that they weren't coming to school. The school, of course, did their due diligence in trying to contact the parents, guardians, and everything. And finally, they stopped getting any response. They contacted Child Protective Services. They didn't really have an address to work on. I was able to contact the Fishkill PD and doing through their due diligence and investigative work, they found out that the parent had moved to Croton and made contact. It was a kindergarten, so it was right on that cusp of being in school or not, and so they were able to locate the mother and the child. Everything was fine, but it was, you know, being that aspect, we the school district kind of met their end of where they could get to, you know, trying to locate the student and everything. So they were a great help in that, finding out that, you know, the child was fine, and they hadn't registered quick enough and to Croton, so they were we weren't that was that big blank of like about a month almost of to where this mother hadn't registered their child. Another one was, of course, we're Beacon High School. There was a threat in the middle of the night, came actually from Kentucky, that on a social media thing that Beacon High was going to be a shooting. They actually spelled out names, how that was going to be done. They contacted me one o'clock in the morning. The name's on that list. They said, is this any of your students? I said, no, ended up being in New York City, Beacon High in New York City. But we were able to, you know, make sure that we could go to school the next morning without, you know, worrying because, you know, those students weren't in ours, because I was able to look that up at home and everything, and they know this aren't our students, and they ended up turning it over to NYPD. So that's just some of the connections that I have at any time that we can really work together, and it's from one of a child not being in school to a serious incident that we didn't have to shut the school down in the morning because we weren't sure where that threat may be. It was just a social media threat, but we were able to work it out with the police department and be comfortable enough that it wasn't our school at that time.
I did want to take this opportunity to mention that Mark's position was created five years ago when you started, and at that time, we had an opportunity through the city to have a school resource officer, one. And through discussion of the board at the time, and we have some new members, so I just wanted the current members and anyone who happens to watch this to understand that we decided at the time that that wasn't a great option for us. For one, we didn't that officer would be a Beacon Police Officer and would have no jurisdiction in Glennum. And so this really felt like a solution where we have someone who's coordinating all of our schools and knows what's going on and is connected to the police department. So I feel like it's been a very successful solution to, you know, because we do really safety is top concern and.
I was also with Town of Fishkill Police for three years also.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a really good rapport with both police departments.
You know, just in terms of the collaboration, we a huge area that Mark really helps organize with the high school team back there, but we when we have a Friday night football game, we are kind of opening the gates to how many people come? Probably over 1,000 some nights, well over 1,000, and they just all kind of come in. And so we definitely do not have like a live-in-fear mentality with this. We really believe these are community events, and I think with COVID restrictions relaxing, like, it really became evident how much people wanted something to do on a Friday night in October, like, so it was really cool to have that. But there's a ton of planning that goes on with with our high school administration, with Mark. We do have Beacon Police at those huge events. We have two or three officers. Sometimes they'll send a few others as well, depending on the crowd size, and that's just a really big help to us. They always defer to us, like, they're not taking over the running of an event or anything like that, but they're there in case of an emergency, and it's really nice to have that because we really are opening up to a wide range of people.
They really do support us on those big activities like that. They basically report to me if I need something, if something is what we need to do, student-wise and anybody we know wise, handled administrative guards and that aspect. But if there is something out of the ordinary that requires a little bit more, you know, then they, you know, I get contact, and I will contact that whatever officer's there, and we usually have a conversation, and it's going smoothly every time if we've had a little incident or something like that. We always have a, you know, ourselves deal with it, administrator deal with it, and if it's that type of a scenario where we need, you know, police to be involved of an outside entity that's there, then they deal with it. And it's been very good, the working, the way we work together on that aspect, and it's very good.
And then this is maybe an obvious thing, but one last thing they do is they, and this has been happening more with COVID rules relaxing as well, is they just do walkthroughs of the building. They do them with students in the building a lot of times, but sometimes they do it when the buildings are empty because they try to familiarize themselves, you know, with the layout of all of our schools, the entire force, just in case, you know, they're needed in an emergency. So around the time Meredith talked about the history of our development of the Director of Security position, at the same time, we began a relationship with Altera Security Consulting. It's a consulting group that has a large number of districts in the region, mostly sort of New York Metro, Long Island, Westchester, Rockland, Orange, Dutchess. I think well over probably 50, 60, 70 districts. It's a we pay for it through a coaster with Bosie, so it's very affordable. When we began with them, they did a security audit of every building, not just school, but every building in the district, and provided us with a report that we then based some changes on and some trainings and changed some of our emergency response planning. And now we have an ongoing yearly relationship with them. Primarily, what they do is they train each of our building response teams at each school. They take part in some of our district-level teams. They work really closely with Mark. They work closely with me sometimes, and certainly the principals. They also do, when a tragic event happens like happened two weeks ago, they provide analysis of that, both sort of in the moment, and then, you know, like, a week or two or more later, they'll provide even more analysis of, unfortunately, you know, what can be learned from the district side of things. And so they've been really a very, very helpful resource for us.
They also keep us up on updated on New York State changes to emergency plans and that aspect of what needs to be in the plans, what's recommended, and what could be possibly state-mandated. So we're pretty much ahead of the curve with them being on top of things, especially with our emergency plans. They know what may be coming down the pike as like they're going to start making this mandatory, that, you know, they talk about different stuff on that aspect. So they do keep us right up on top of what the state is going to require for us to do and being ahead of the curve on suggestions and stuff.
So the New York Smart Bond was years ago that that it started, want to say like eight, nine years ago, I think it began, and it allowed districts to use state money for either the purchase of like laptop technology, computer technology, or security technology. What was the third part of the Smart Bond? I can't remember. Maybe it doesn't matter. So we originally were going to use it on laptops, but we the process was too slow with the state, and we funded our one-to-one initiative ourselves. So we switched our application, and we did it for security technology. So this past really spring, summer, and into then a lot of this school year, every single one of our cameras have been replaced, and they've added a lot of cameras. So we have really good camera coverage throughout each of our buildings, and the cameras are very current and easy to use and easy to, you know, see what's happening on them. And we also have technology, we're not going to get detailed about it, but we have technology that allows us to, in essence, instantly inform either BPD or the Town of Fishkill PD when a lockdown is occurring. So instead of it being like one other thing that somebody has to do, they'll just come instantly to a school. And we've done some trainings with that, and they've been a part of that, and it's been nice to be able to use state money. The Smart Bond was $2 million, covered all of this. And again, it's very limited what we can use with this, so we're really happy to focus on safety and security with that. We know it's just technology is just a part of all of this, but us being able to reach law enforcement really in a moment and to have much better cameras, because the cameras we have were very outdated, has been nice, and it's been nice to use state money to do And then just communications and continuous improvement. So we do have an anonymous tip line on our website. It's an icon right at the top. I'll send out occasional email reminders. I sent one last week, but I'll do that more frequently. We do have a number of people that use it, and a number of our students use it. So we also, and this has been for sure since when I started, just continually communicating when things arise, essentially. I think there was a lot post the Parkland tragedy. That was my first year here, 2017. There was a lot of there was a lot of sort of incidents regionally, like false threats and those kinds of things. So we did a lot of communication during that time to, I think, what was I always say, to reduce rumor spreading? And so we'll always try to a lot of time, that's the main point of our communication, is to try to try to calm the rumor mill down a little bit and just be clear about what's actually happening. So we'll always commit to trying to communicate about issues or responses to an issue, and then we're just constantly going through training regarding this. Another thing I just want to bring up is our or the board, the board's commitment to mental health. Over the last three years, we've added two social workers to the secondary level. That's to an already well-resourced district in terms of the number of social workers and school psychologists that we have. And I feel in future budgets, if we need more mental health support, especially in the area of like social workers, we'll continue to find ways to fund it. It's not going away. This is a nationwide issue in terms of mental health. I know social workers and school psychologists are just like part of the solution, but it's something that we'll continue to evaluate. So that's really a key part of all of this as well. But we want to open up for questions.
For the connection for home with the social workers and stuff, are they going to be able to do like parent workshops and stuff like we have? I haven't seen many of those.
Yeah.
You know, Beacon and stuff, so I was hoping that they could do that to have that connection with the home and school.
Yeah. I'd love next year to get a few different workshops going, and I know we've I, you know, I think everyone knows I got super tired of Zoom and couldn't barely go on it. I do think moving forward, sometimes a parent workshop might reach more people, like, you want to do in-person and Zoom, but I definitely want to do some on substance abuse. I think, you know, parents learning as much as they can about that. I think doing some on social media would be really important, and then also just supporting mental health.
I know like the state troopers have someone allocated for the state in certain areas to do trainings that if the school contacted, they would do the trainings and stuff.
Yeah, I'm looking at my high school folks. You got it, Cory? I know, I think the state trooper does the one where it's like it's like a typical teenager's bedroom, but they kind of walk you through it and like things as a parent you should be looking for.
They do signs. I think they do like internet, like the social media.
They do that, and it's all been talked about. I belong to the county one, and unfortunately, the one female trooper that was there, and because of COVID, we've only been doing online. I hope we're getting back into that, but that was always something of the social media getting to the kids and on how that social media really affects and the dangers of it and everything. But the troopers do a very good presentation on it. I've seen it, and it is something worth looking into.
And are the social workers at the like, are they addressing this through the like the health curriculum with the students? And like, how is the health curriculum? Because I know it's part of the health curriculum for the elementary. Is that being done through the PE teachers, the classroom teachers, social workers?
That's 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 an that's an area that we're working on kind of integrating more and streamlining more.
I think all districts are.
What's that?
I think all districts are trying to.
Right. But I, yeah, there I mean, there's a variety of issues that have come up the last two years of areas we need to integrate more in the curriculum in terms of mental health. But yeah, that's an area that we're looking at for sure. What else?
I could just tell you, my kids feel we're really safe at school, so I mean, kudos to the district to make sure that they're dealing with it and stuff, so.
Well, it's funny, I, you know, when I sat down to write sort of the second thing that I wrote a week later, and we kind of listed all the things we do, you know, sometimes you can't prevent a tragedy, right? That's one of the sad things we learn from all these districts. But, you know, it is something that we do. When I was writing that letter, Mark, I was thinking of all the conversations that we have all the time. Although the one story Mark was telling, I think you did not wake me up in the middle of the night to tell me that one. You waited you waited till like five in the morning.
At that level, you would have been there.
But, you know, it's it's something we do spend a lot of time on. I'm really proud of our whole staff with how we've really kind of gotten back to having these big events, and they're done in a really safe way. And, and, you know, sometimes people, not a lot, but I've gotten a couple of questions like at a football game, why are there all these police here? And so A is that we do pay for some to be there, so I think we pay for two. And then sometimes there's more because they want to be there, and I think that's fine. And so I've said to folks, we're opening, you know, we're opening the gates to like 1,000 or more people, and we're not really doing a lot of checking when they come in. We're just saying, come enjoy the night. And so having them there in the background, I think, really helps. But I only bring that up because we just spend a lot of time focused on this. Our administrators spend a ton of time on this, too. It's just really important. Having Mark has been really key. And. And all the stuff that he does, sort of, he told those two stories, but those happen sort of on a daily basis in one way or another. His liaison work with the local law enforcement has really been invaluable.
With these big events, the administrators and, you know, the AD, John Giacometto, I mean, we all work together on that and it is a good group that we have. And like he said, with the police department there, we do pay one or two to be there depending on the size of the event. But because of my relationship, a lot of the guys come traveling through when they're on duty here just to come by for the show, just see that they're here. And a lot of them are Beacon, you know, you know, relative here. So they come through just to see people that they haven't seen. They might've been alumnis here. So it's a good relationship all the way around with the administrators and the Beacon police when we have a big event like that. It's a community event and they do come by. They're, you know, they're not getting paid to come by, but they're, they're coming by just because it is a community event and, and have a stock in it.
And one thing I want to give credit to both Mark and the high school administration for this year is they've been meeting with groups of students this year to talk about the role of security guards, ways to improve the relationship of the security guards with students in the school. I, I really commend both high school administration and Mark for not just having one meeting, but they've had a series of meetings with that. And, and I think, you know, going back to the communication part, we're all here for the same reasons, but sometimes, you know, when you're trying to get a group of kids to class on time or whatever, it, it gets either misinterpreted or taken the wrong way. And, and I think we've really tried to open lines of communication with a lot of students at the high school in regards to that. And I know that will continue. And that's been really nice to see this year too. So, so anyway, we wanted to provide this update, just kind of open up for questions, but just know the work is just always ongoing and, and daily. Good?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And the board will return in about a half hour.
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, second by Flora. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor. One, two, three, four. Passes seven to zero.
Before I move on, I would actually like to pull something from the consent agenda and vote on it separately. We have here tonight our new assistant principal at the high school, Candace, I can't remember your last name. I'm looking it up right now. Someone help me if you.
Where is it?
It is item. Okay. Candace Edwards Allen, welcome. So can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to remove it from the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, thank you. Can I have a motion to remove item W? Oh no, sorry. X1 from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Anthony.
Should we just make it one motion and remove it from there and place it somewhere?
Um, we're gonna, well, we're gonna remove on it, remove it and vote on it separately now. So that she doesn't have to stay through.
No, but instead of making two motions, one to remove it, one to place it. Should we just make it one motion? So I mean, we want it as 10.02? What do you, I mean, 9.0? You want it now?
Yes.
So that would be? 5.1? 5.2?
Hang on, let me get my computer open.
5.02?
Yes.
So make a motion to remove from W, place it as 5.0, 5.012?
Okay. So the motion is to remove X1 from the consent agenda and change it to 5.02. Correct?
Yep.
So moved.
Anthony, second by?
Second.
Anthony. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Favor passes eight to zero. And so then we still have to approve it in its new, we have to approve 5.02.
Make a motion to approve 5.02?
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Flora? Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Thank you so much Candace. Welcome very, sorry to make you wait. I didn't do that before. Exact, I wasn't thinking, but welcome.
So I just want to take a moment. Candace, I'm going to try to remember your resume. You started your teaching career in the Bronx. And for the last seven years, you've been teaching at Monroe, Monroe Woodbury High School. The last year as their special education chair of the high school. And we are just super excited to have her start here. And, and you didn't even leave during exec when they were telling stories and stuff. Just, no, I'm just teasing. But we're really excited to have Candace join the team and get started on July in a few weeks, right? So great. So congratulations.
Okay. I mean, that is complicated as possible. There's one other change to the agenda, which is that item W3 has been removed. I don't see any parent groups or student groups here speak. So moving on to Matt's superintendent report.
I'll just be brief tonight. Just want to give a shout out to the drama club from Roundabout Middle School, the performance of high school, hold on, high school musical.
It's called.
Junior. Was, was outstanding. They really did a nice job. And this is just that exciting time of the year. Tomorrow night, we have scholarship night at the high school. So kids receiving scholarships. We have an event to acknowledge them in the theater. Then Wednesday night is the athletic awards ceremony. I think John moved it to indoor, so, because I think the weather's supposed to be a little rainy over the next few days. And then we have the honors tea, the Roundabout honors tea on Monday night of next week. We have the fifth grade moving up ceremonies beginning. We have high school graduation. We're still, still doing it at Dutch Estate in this year. So that's on Friday, the 17th. The rain, not, it's not going to rain, but the rain switch for that is Saturday morning, right Anne Marie, the 18th? And, and then Roundabout's graduation is going to be, I think it's on the 23rd. So it's just my favorite time of year. It's so much fun acknowledging all of our students and just also acknowledging all the hard work of the staff to get us here. So thank you. Thanks Meredith.
Thank you. Committee reports, including board comments. Anthony White?
Sure. Mine's pretty lengthy, so I do apologize. Someone got happy writing.
Let me grab my extra sweater.
No, Mrs. Lucendo O'Neil met with all teachers by grade levels during the last two weeks of May. The purpose of the meeting was to get feedback regarding curriculum, student social emotional learning and this year's PD options. Some of the trends that she saw during those conversations was students were having a hard time transitioning back from five days a week instruction. Students struggled with stamina, task completion and sustaining engagement. Teachers have noticed that one year's worth of growth despite the challenges has happened. And this has been quantified through IREDDI informal test assessments and FMP benchmarks, Fanta's panel. Teachers have appreciated the embedded time to work on grade level and departments during the November and March professional learning days. Elementary teachers have enjoyed the guided reading PD offered by SAGI and they would like more like that. They would also like more social emotional learning strategies, PDs. Secondary teachers would like more social, social emotional learning support and opportunities to engage more with the next gen standards. Most teachers feel there is a disconnect between school and home in elementary versus middle school versus high school. So the vertical alignment and the connection between the home and school. There were concerns at the secondary level of students entering with gaps due to COVID. So the plan for the 22, 23 school year is based on the feedback. Teachers will be offered opportunities to sign up for responsive classroom trainings starting this July. Training teachers will be offered a one day of refresher training. So if they attended previously. Summer school will be offered, will offer a focus on social emotional learning and STEM, which is science, technology. Oh my God, what's E? Engineering, engineering and mathematics. Professional learning days will be intergrade level conversation scheduled to build that vertical alignment. Example, teachers will meet with grade levels below and above. Curriculum maps will be, will commence in the secondary science. Two teachers will be participating in the piloting of new eighth grade science test questions. There's, there's going to be no science, fifth grade science test next year. They're moving it from fourth to fifth grade. There's going to be no test next year, but there will be a science test in 2024. Curriculum maps.
Moving to fifth?
So yeah, it's currently right now, it's fourth grade. This is the last year that they're going to have, have it in fourth grade. They're going to the next gen science learning standards. So next year, there's going to be no science tests in fifth grade, but it will resume in 2024. Curriculum mapping will be ongoing in the 22, 23 school year. The RTI process and protocols will be redefined and supported by the TOSA, teacher on assignment. A pacing calendar will be created over the summer to ensure cohesion, continuity and transparency. The calendar will be posted on the curriculum page of the district's website. And a parent support tab will be added to the curriculum pages. Did I forget anything? All right. And the meeting was on Wednesday, May 25th at 3:30 and it was virtual. And there are no other meetings scheduled for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you Anthony.
Any questions?
Sounds a lot. Can you email that to us?
Maybe.
It's a lot to take in.
I will. The other things that, so my board comments are, there was a National Junior Honor Society inductions last week. There was a nice large group that were inducted. It was a very nice ceremony. They did the pillars of the National Junior Honor Society and they had the candle lighting ceremony. And surprisingly, it was relatively quick with all the inductions. And it was nice to see that there were eighth graders that were inducted this year as well as eighth graders returning that were inducted as seventh graders to welcome that new seventh graders in. So it was a nice ceremony that happened. What else? That's about it.
Great. Thank you so much. Craig?
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, we have our audit and finance committee set for the ninth, Thursday, right? At six. I'm not recalling whether we were continuing with facilities and operations or if we postponed that.
I was going to speak with Kristen about that.
Okay. So that's to be determined then?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's it.
We're in the midst of, we're meeting with all the building design committees right now. So we have, I think, three of them next, this week and three next week. So it might make sense to wait till we do all those. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Kristen.
And will that be in person then?
Soon.
We're trying, we're, I've reached out to Dan Pedago and make sure we can still do it on Zoom.
I think we can until the 11th.
Okay.
So I think we're good for the moment anyway.
So then I'll send out.
Okay. Great.
Yeah. I don't know if I mentioned this before. I went to the concert for the chorus and the band at the high school and thought that they did a tremendous job. And I particularly noted that the, the band is larger and that they're better. And I believe this is a direct result of what happens when you, you start the band lessons in the fourth grade and then you keep plugging away in each grade after that. It becomes cumulative. And I think we're beginning to see the beginnings of the payoff. And finally, this is not about the district, except that there's a meeting in the auditorium, which is to commemorate the Lafayette event. This is part of your history. I'm sure you all remember General or Marquita Lafayette and his role in our kicking the British out of here so we could be our own country. The, today at two o'clock, there was a ceremony down at the riverfront, putting up a plaque, which you can go see the next time you visit. The train station is right across. And it commemorates the visit in 1824 of Lafayette to many places up and down the river and in New York and Boston. And that included our little community, which at that point was not known as Beacon. Would have been Fishkill Landing or Fishkill on Hudson, depending upon which year you're talking about. And it, the reason he came here was to visit Caroline DeWitt, who was the granddaughter of John Adams, who was one of our early presidents. So take a look at the plaque when you get a chance.
Thank you. Anthony?
Good evening. You know, with, with June upon us, there's a, there's a lot of happiness in the air, a lot of sadness in the air. You know, as things come to a close, new, new doors open. You know, I have not been able to go to quite a few of the invitations for the honor societies. And I know there's an award ceremony on Tuesday. Unfortunately, I can't make that one either due to work. But I, I do want to congratulate, you know, all the students for, for all the different levels of accomplishments and, and, you know, wish them well on their, on their next chapter.
Great, thank you. John?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment to the community to let you guys know that Beacon Hoops is starting up this summer and it is an online registration only. And just to be on the lookout for that on the social media platforms.
Thank you. Eunice? Thank you. Welcome Eunice. First meeting.
I don't really have a comment.
That's okay. You don't have to. I just want to give you the opportunity in case you do. Alyssa?
The next meeting of the policy committee is still on my calendar for June 13th. I assume we're doing that. And I wanted to make a last push for tickets to the June Rising inaugural benefit this coming Saturday, June 11th, for the Foundation for Beacon Schools. We will have a live band, great food, amazing raffle prizes. You can get your tickets at foundationforbeaconschools.org/FBS-gala. Thank you. Please come. It's going to be a really fun party.
Hey.
And also there's a free, the, all board members are comped. So you don't have to pay for a ticket. So you should really come. If anyone here is interested, text me. I have the promo code, top secret.
Alyssa, for the policy meeting, I hope we can get this done by the 13th. We, we want to make just some minor revisions to the code of conduct after this year, like the, especially from Roundabout and the high school. And so we'll try to have that ready for the 13th. So I just would like to put a placeholder there for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alyssa, I have a meeting in Albany in the day. I expect to be there on time.
Okay.
If I hit traffic or something, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Flora?
Yeah, so we had the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Committee meeting right before this meeting. And we spoke about the CLPCA testimony that Meredith put together. I'm not even going to try and remember what that stands for. Do you remember off the top of your head?
It's the.
Cease for climate.
We'll talk about it in new business.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to talk about it in new business. But essentially, we're gonna, we are gonna turn that into a resolution so that we can send it to NISBA. The, NISBA, this is basically the, the advocacy we're wrapping up the year with. So we're gonna focus on, on that. And it, it does a really good job of tying together sort of, you know, environmental mandates and, you know, funding that we have coming up for things like buses. And then we're going to look tonight at the statement on universal free meals, which will be new business as well. You guys had, had a chance to look at it earlier. And we would like to do some, you know, end of year advocacy, get the, you know, local school community involved to also put that upward pressure on legislators. I actually just now read that it looks like 80 New York State legislators last week, along with the Food Research and Action Center, sent a letter urging the US Department of Agriculture to extend the program, providing free meals to all students. So there, there are things happening in New York and it would be great to get more noise around that. The goal really is that there is a possibility that the USDA could extend the program more. So, so we really want to push for that. The goal really is that there is a possibility that the USDA could extend the program more, so, so we really want to push for that. In addition, we talked about UPK and we're going to put together draft advocacy and we'll take care of that by email, right? The putting that together.
Yeah.
So, so that's how we're gonna wrap up the year for, for the committee. And then at the Duchess County School Board Association, I'm sorry, I'm so cold, I'm having a hard time thinking. At the Duchess County School Board Association meeting, we talked about the possibility of doing a ninety-minute presentation from NISBA. It would be Patrick Longo, who's the member relations manager. And it's a sort of pre, pre-made agenda. It's called a culture of leadership. And it's basically about how school boards can impact district culture by looking at their, the way that they model leadership, the way that they communicate together, the way that they communicate also with the community. So we were talking about that being possibly a very useful thing for, for our board to, to have presented. And there was also a tentative plan for meetings starting in the next school year, to have an education session for the Duchess County School Board Association members to get more insight on the electric bus issue, because obviously that's a big budget and sort of learning curve for us. So it would be great to, if we could get more info on that. And that's all I have for now.
Awesome. Thank you. And I have no comments. So, moving on to new business, so we're gonna, we are gonna talk about the school meal letter. Okay.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah. So let's, ten point oh one is the CLCPA testimony, which is, which stands for climate.
Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act.
So this, this letter is actually an executive material. It's not public, so I feel like we should read it. Further, yeah. Would you like to read it?
I think I have a.
Oh, he might have to pause.
Oh, or I can read it if you.
Do you want a physical copy?
Oh, I've got it here.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is something we talked about at the last meeting. It is, we will send this to, we'll, we'll create this, if the board approves it, as a resolution to send to NISBA. But also just, you can submit it to New York State to their, they have a, they have a a way to submit a testimony. So this, as, in this form would be the testimony and then we'll make it into resolution if the board approves it. Here is what it says. As school board members, we would like to respond to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act draft scoping plan. We care very deeply about the future of our students. It's our duty to provide them with a foundation that will prepare them for successful lives. We feel that this responsibility extends to actively participating in solutions to the global climate emergency. We understand that school districts can be an impactful part of the solution to this crisis. And we are encouraged that there is legislation setting targets and goals for school districts to fight climate change. But we cannot meet these critical targets without significant additional funding. Each year, we are tasked with presenting, presenting a budget for public approval. We created this, we create this budget mindful of the burden to the taxpayer and the restrictions created by our tax, our state tax cap, while aiming to meet the needs of our students and families. Even though much of the infrastructure for climate change adoption, adaptation would be, would in the long run save our district money, our school district money, it is impossible with our current budget to make the large initial investment required. This is true for all school districts in New York, but especially for districts like ours, where state funding makes up a significant portion of our budget. We struggle with this same problem when we address capital improvements. Last year, we, we chose the most pressing items from our seemingly endless building condition survey for a capital project. On the list were several aging boilers that needed replacing. While a new boiler is more energy efficient than an old one, a complete phase out of fossil fuels is truly needed to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. But given our budget restrictions, we could not consider options that would heat our buildings without fossil fuels. The same is true for transportation. Every year, we replace several aging school buses, but we cannot afford the cost of environmentally friendly electric buses and the new infrastructure needed to support them. It is frustrating and heartbreaking to lose these opportunities, opportunities to improve our students' futures. We know the stakes and we see how our school district can be a large part of the solution to the climate crisis. So we ask for your support to electrify our buildings and transportation system. Without your help, these solutions won't be possible for our district or our students. With regards to the specific options in the draft scoping plan, scenario three is clearly the best option. Zero emissions by two thousand forty is ambitious but necessary. The best way to reach that goal is with, with a plan that includes a phase out of fossil fuels that begins now, along with a rapid deployment of renewables. Lastly, these targets and timelines are meaningless without legal mechanisms to enforce compliance. CLCPA must be enforceable as law and must include a commitment to provide the financial support to make it possible for organizations like ours to comply. Are there any questions or comments about this?
Well, I mean, the comment I have is, is I, it's a good letter.
Great. Awesome. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve this letter?
I move the adoption of this letter.
Second.
Craig, Antony with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. So I will, Kelly, I'll submit this as testimony. But if you could send it to NISBA and a copy to our elected officials as well.
Do we need to, do we need to put it in a different format, though, for the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted them to have this, but then we would submit through their, their resolution process as a resolution.
And do we need to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to put it in resolution form.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that is done. So do you, can I have a motion to add an item? To new business, ten point oh two, which is the advocacy letter for free school, free school meals.
So moved. Second.
Antony, Flora? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Okay. And do you wanna, this letter was already circulated.
It was, and I just resent it again. I will read it really quickly. Grocery prices in the U.S. are ten percent higher than they were in two thousand twenty-one and those prices are expected to climb. Increased food costs lead to even more food insecurity across the country and mean higher costs for districts that must use limited resources to provide nutritious meals. In New York State, around eight hundred thousand students depend on free breakfast and lunch at school. Historically, some students from low-income households haven't participated in free reduced school meal programs because they're afraid of the stigma associated with being in the program. According to Food Service Director Katie Hedwell of the Shenan, I should have learned how to say this before. Shenanahawa Central School District in New York, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. When children aren't included in the free meal program, it often leads to them eating poorly or not at all. Universal free meals removes the need for this administratively complex and potentially shaming process. It allows everyone to access nutritious meals without having to navigate any bureaucracy or to identify themselves in need. Many children eat up half their, half, up to half their daily calories at school. A free universal meal program ensures that they have access to those critical calories, regardless of their ability to pay or their status with a meal program. It also represents a huge annual cost savings for low-income families. The research on the impact of access to school meals is clear. It can improve students' health and the quality of their daily nutrition, increase academic performance and significantly help households struggling with food insecurity. Anna Fiala, Anna Fiala, Senior Technical Advisor for the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Food and Nutrition Service, said that the agency does acknowledge that the downstream effects from COVID nineteen are still happening and that they're far from over. And we're working hard to smooth this transition as much as possible. But this transition should not move backwards to the old way of doing things. It should be a transition to a more equitable and student-centered program. One that provides guaranteed access to nutrition, nutritious options for students, removes the stigma, stigma and stress of applying for a meal program, erases student meal debt and creates a safer, more nurturing environment that contributes to students' sense of belonging and well-being. This is an obvious benefit that impacts every aspect of student performance and health, and it should be prioritized. We, the board members of the Beacon City School District, are asking for two things. First, lawmakers must push through an emergency waiver extending the free universal meal plan through the next school year. And second, they must make the program permanent across the United States. All children deserve access to nutritious daily meals and the money that they or their family has should not be a barrier to this basic human right.
Amen. So can I have a motion to approve this letter?
So moved. Second.
Alyssa, Antony, comments or questions?
Thank you for writing it up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. So again, we're gonna send this to NISBA and our electeds?
Yes, we're gonna send it out and we're also going to share it with the PTOs and the PTAAs and along with a link to voter voice. So the Lower Hudson Education Coalition has done a really great job of creating a platform. And there's one specifically for school meals. So all the parents have to do is they can click on their platform and we'll include the link with the statement. They can plug the statement in. It finds their representatives for them and off it goes. And I think just the more people creating noise, the better.
Awesome. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate. And that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve eleven point oh one through eleven point two seven less eleven point oh five? What is that? X, X one?
X one was already removed.
Well, I just wanted to note it for the.
Okay. Gotcha. All right.
Sorry. If it's redundant, I apologize.
No, no, it's all right.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Alyssa, second. By Flora, comments or questions?
Thank you for the donation, eleven point oh nine.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Flora, Antony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero at nine oh seven. Thank you. Great night, everyone.